And other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by open meeting law. So I will turn to our first item on the agenda, which is executive session. To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So.
Second. And since Brian isn't on, we can do this in person. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will be back shortly.
We'll move.
Yeah.
It's easier with the Zoom and everything.
It is six forty-seven and we are back in our regular session. And next on our agenda is the chair's report. You may notice a slight change in the way we operate. In an attempt to save time, you may find us referring to reports we have been given. All items discussed are referred to in open meetings of public record. So you can find those documents on the school website. If you go to the school committee, then to minutes and agendas, scroll down to the meeting date and all documents for that meeting can be found there. We hope by streamlining the meetings, the public will be more engaged. Let us know how we are doing. And for people who are not familiar, it is not unusual for us to still be here at ten o'clock. So we're trying not to do that. At the September fifth Select Board meeting, Opera Funds were approved for athletic field study for fifty thousand dollars. A sidewalk request for a hundred and one thousand, six hundred and forty dollars, which I spoke with Mr. Bernard at DPW and he will be managing that project. And also the Cultural Council's request for artist and residents at the high school in the amount of twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars, among many other town projects. We thank the Select Board for their support. And moving on, the school committee welcomes comments from the public. Comments addressing topics under the scope and authority of the school committee are welcome at either public comment section. Please remember, this is public comment, not discussion, and limit your comments to three minutes. Each public comment section has a maximum of ten minutes. Comments about individual students are prohibited by state and federal law. So do we have any public comment this evening? And no one online?
No hands raised.
Alrighty then, we will continue on. We have review and approve minutes from the regular session, August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. Has everybody read those?
Have.
And we all set with those?
Motion approved.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so that is approved. Next, we have approved warrants and line item transfers. We have added this to our agenda. The warrants have been available to the school committee members to look at. And they are in the amount from September first through September twelfth of two hundred thirty-seven thousand, forty-eight dollars and thirteen cents. Any comments on our warrants?
My only comment is I appreciate your work and the work of the business office and superintendent for facilitating our ability to induct our statutory responsibility for oversight of accounts. So I think this does a good job in moving us in that direction.
Yeah, I'm happy with it as well. So now we're on number seven, the superintendent's report.
Do we have to approve?
We don't.
Okay.
No, because we've
They've already been signed off.
We've already We've already delegated the response of the signatory authority to Carol.
Good evening. An update for you on transportation. The number of placements waiting currently for an assignment to a bus is two. At the last meeting, I reported seven. All seven of those have been placed. This is a new two. An update for you on the Artist in Residence Program. Dr. Chandler from the Cultural Council will be meeting with high school art teachers tomorrow. So I'll have more information after that. I wanted to provide you an update on our search for a Director of Facilities and Grounds. Mr. Eric Heavy has been selected as the next Director of Facilities and Grounds. He is currently the Director of Facilities and Grounds for Greenfield Public Schools. He has also served in that same role in the Spencer Eastbrook Field Regional School District. In addition to experience in the role, his first career was in IT. He has also served his hometown as a member of the Select Board, the Finance Committee, and the School Committee, as well as in the role of volunteer firefighter. He has also served on two building committees in his hometown of North Brookfield. We feel all of his experience make him a really wonderful fit for the role of Director of Facilities and Grounds in Lunenburg. As it is capital planning season, he will be remaining in his current role, in his current district, for a few weeks more to ensure that they have a solid capital plan before he exits the district. He is anticipated to begin here on Monday, October twenty-third. And after his arrival, we will be scheduling a meet and greet opportunity for him. An update on water testing. We've conducted our annual water testing in June. Information on the results from each school will be sent home via email on Friday. The results will also be posted on our website. I attended the Volunteer Opportunity Fair that was hosted by Eagle House last week. There, I shared volunteer opportunities available with the schools and the central office. We will be posting the flyer that we created for that event on our website to make everyone aware of opportunities available to them to volunteer. Governor Mara Healy proclaimed this week, September eighteenth through the twenty-second, Adult Education and Family Literacy Week in Massachusetts, in order to highlight the incredible learning opportunities available to adult residents and to help them reach their professional and personal goals through public education at no cost. Public Adult Education of Massachusetts, which is part of the Department of Education, uses federal and state grants to fund a broad network of education providers and programs, including local school systems, community-based agencies, community colleges, libraries, volunteer organizations, correctional facilities, and others. For anybody looking for more information about public adult education of Massachusetts, including free high school equivalency testing, they can go to the Mass Department of Education's website. MCAS twenty twenty-three results are now available. I'll share from the Department of Education's press release. They report that while overall results are still lower than they were hoped, that they lower than they were in twenty nineteen, results in English Language Arts and Math were level or improved in all grades compared to last year. Math compared to last year, the percentage of students scoring meeting or exceeding expectations increased by two percentage points, grades three through eight. The percentage of students who scored meeting or exceeding expectations in grade ten remained the same. English Language Arts scores increased this year as compared to last. Of particular note, with this particular test, the subgroup of African-American Black tenth grades scores were higher in the twenty twenty-three test than pre-COVID in twenty nineteen. Science scores decreased slightly this year. This past spring was the second administration of the Next Generation High School Biology and Introductory Physics tests. Regarding accountability, sixty-two percent of schools met, exceeded, or made substantial progress towards their accountability targets. I am happy to report that Lunenburg Public Schools is in that category. A note that they made in their press release. They want everyone to be aware that when you're considering this year's test results and how to compare them to previous years, that it's helpful to remember due to the pandemic that there were variations in how MCAS was administered over the last several years. Twenty nineteen, full tests in grades three through eight and high school. Twenty twenty, no MCAS administration at all. Twenty twenty-one, half tests. In other words, the sessions were reduced to a fewer number in grades three through eight, full tests at the high school level. Last year, we restored full testing in grades three through eight and high school. And again, this past year in twenty twenty-three, full tests for grades three through eight and high school. And I just want to note that we will be providing a written summary report to the school committee at the October eighteenth meeting relative to our overall results. We will also, as we did last year, be providing Zoom forums for families where we will do those school by school. Although there is conversation about doing a combined primary Turkey Hill and a combined middle high school presentation where we'll cover MCAS results, the fall IREDDI data. And at the middle school level, we'll also talk about the new ELA curriculum Amplify being implemented this year in grades six, seven, and eight. Additional information about these forums, including dates, times, and Zoom links, will be sent out by the schools. And we will record the forums so that they can be posted for anyone who was unable to attend. A few reminders about upcoming dates. Next week is our Nature's Classroom Field Trip for the fifth grade. Monday, October second is our next PTO meeting. That's right here in this room at the middle high school, seven PM. Wednesday, October fourth is our next school committee meeting. That will be at Town Hall at six thirty. That will be a hybrid via Zoom meeting. Monday, October ninth, schools and offices are closed in observance of the Columbus Day Indigenous Peoples' Day holiday. Wednesday, October eighteenth is an early release day for the middle high school students only. That is for parent-teacher conferences during the afternoon. That same evening, the school committee will meet here again at the middle high school at six thirty PM. That meeting will also be hybrid via Zoom. And October nineteenth will be the evening parent-teacher conferences for middle high school. And that's all I have for you. That was rather lengthy, but all important information. So thank you for your patience.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the student representative, who obviously is not here. Is she on Zoom? Or he, whoever it may be?
No.
Okay. Then we'll move on to a discussion of the Fall Athletics Report.
You have a copy of the updated numbers for all of our fall sports. The one, and that report is also posted online for the public to see. The one thing that I will add is that this year, we are trying something new. We are going to have available for We are going to have available for uh parents and fans seasons tickets uh that can be purchased online because as we know, many people do not carry cash with them these days. So it uh we're hoping that it will be uh more convenient for folks looking to attend our our games and um that it will be uh beneficial all the way around. So we'll we'll give you some feedback on that after after the season ends. So um if anybody has any questions, please forward them my way um and I can uh get you some follow-up information relative to fall athletic numbers.
Okay. If there isn't any discussion around that, we will continue Keystone Collaborative Update.
Again, you have a report, it's just a quarterly update uh that I provide for you uh relative to the uh Keystone Collaborative as I am your elected representative to that executive board. This update is also posted on the website for the public.
I don't have any questions on the Keystone Collaborative. Anybody else?
Not this time.
Okay. Then next is the bullying prevention and intervention plan.
When we met last June, uh and there was a panel uh of administrators uh that met with you to uh review how we handle uh claims of bullying in our schools as well as an overview of the the law that was provided uh by our school department attorney. Um, I had indicated at that time that we were due to uh review and revise uh that that bullying plan for the district. Um, the plan that uh you have available and is also available to the public. Uh, it was sent home actually, and it was also posted uh with the documents for tonight's meeting. Uh, that was actually drafted in consultation with our attorney, our school department attorney. Uh, it does meet all of the legal requirements uh that districts have to meet uh with their plan. Um, that said, uh it's now public for public review. Uh, anybody that has any comments, questions or other feedback, um they're encouraged to send it uh via email to L P S at lunenburgschools.net. Um, my intention is to leave this up for for uh public uh review and comment and potentially bring it back um to the October eighteenth meeting for approval. Um, we'll see what kind of feedback we get and if there's any uh revision that that we may want to um un- undertake based on any of the comment or questions that come in. Uh, obviously, any revision, we would consult with the school attorney to be sure that what we have in this document is compliant with the law.
Have we gotten any feedback?
Uh, we have not at this point.
Okay.
Uh, but we'll continue to remind folks that it's available.
I had two things. One was just under section three prohibition against bullying and retaliation. Um, it says at uh at school sponsored or school related activities. And then the next bullet point is at functions or programs, whether on or off school grounds.
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't define what kind of programs, whether or not those are school programs or programs is really vague. Are we purposely leaving it vague?
Um, so I would say that that largely refers to programs related to the school. However, I can tell you that if um there's any incident of uh alleged bullying that occurs outside of the school, school program involved or not, if it's reported, we investigate. Because oftentimes, parents are concerned that there's spillover into their interactions with peers during the school day. So the bottom line is anytime that we are made aware of a potential uh interaction that that may be uh a bullying situation, we investigate it. We're obligated to investigate it. And I can tell you that there are many, many, many investigations that are initiated even at the elementary school level uh based on interactions off school time through social media. But we are very busy uh following up on on all of that on a regular basis, unfortunately.
Peter? This is described as a bullying prevention and intervention plan.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's a lot here um for those who've not seen the document. It's a ten-page document. Um, I I'm curious as to how this gets enshrined. Because it's not, it's planned, it's not a policy, it's not a hand, it's not handbook content, it's not, it's planned. So.
So we do have policy, school committee policy that gets at that. And the bottom line is uh we are legally obligated to have, every district is, to have a plan. Um, and we are legally obligated to review it and update it. Um, largely, um updates of any substantive nature would really um come in tandem with a change to the law. Um, and obviously, if the law were to change in an off year for review, we would be reviewing it and updating it at that point. Um, so it it's legally required. We haven't posted on our website. Um.
So let me restate this. Um. When we approve a policy, that becomes force in effect for our entire school district. When we approve a handbook, that becomes force in effect for all of the students and teachers and staff operating the school that that handbook governs. This has content that I am sure is probably repeated in policy and handbook. Has this been audited against those documents or does this stand as a separate document that has force in effect system-wide but is not part of our policy? Or set of policies?
They, they're documents that are intertwined. Um, you'll note that at the end of this document, there are cross-references listed at the end, so it cross-references policy, cross-references school handbooks. You approved school handbooks um last spring because we have to get them published, we have to uh be ready to roll those out um in August. We will go back and make sure when we revise handbooks that there's a link, we can actually go and put the an updated link to this new policy and uh this new plan anyway. But we will double check because we go through those every single year. Um, we update links for updated school policies that might be in school handbooks, et cetera, et cetera. That said, um, approval of this document really should trump anything that would be in the school handbook.
Because it's legally required?
Because and it's the most recently reviewed and approved document in the school committee. Um, sitting here right now, I do not believe that there's anything in this plan that is in conflict with anything that's in the handbooks uh or the policy. They they actually provide more detail than this plan.
The handbooks are have greater detail
Because they're
bullying than this ten-page document?
Because it connects back and references the policy. There's actual language that is often pulled into the handbooks from the policy.
Okay.
But there should be nothing that conflicts because our policy aligns with the law. This document gives an overview in accordance with the law. So there really should be nothing in conflict here. Again, because our attorneys review our policy, particularly policy that's tied to such significant law. And she also reviewed this document.
Okay, so I understand that and I accept it. The the timeline is is this gets approved in October?
We could approve it sooner. My thought was that we would leave it open for public review and comment.
For comment makes sense and if it needs to be amended based on some really good comments, then we should consider doing that.
Um, we could move the timeline up and look at approval at the next meeting if you like. I I would just notify families that it would be coming forward.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't feel a great sense of urgency. Here's the, here's where my uh great sense of urgency in terms of pushing this forward. I think that for the point that you've made, the 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 policies and handbooks that we have in place, there's my knowledge, nothing substantive wrong, substantially wrong with them. The reason why this is reviewed by an attorney is because this has a tendency to go down litigious paths.
Mm-hmm.
And a litigator who sees daylight between a policy and a handbook and a plan is likely to exploit that data.
Correct.
And so I I understand your explanation. I I would just like some kind of validation from our attorney that that's been considered.
Mm-hmm.
Not only with respect to not only with respect to with respect to both policies and handbooks that are in effect currently as well as what we would expect updates to handbooks being being made next year, right? Like, and and I know that I'm being overly cautious here, but
Yep.
something goes way sideways on a case over the course of this year. You've just articulated that our handbooks will be brought, whatever may be out of line will be brought in line for next year's handbooks. Meanwhile, something goes sideways this year and there's daylight that's that's identified by, you know, an opposing attorney and now we have a problem. And I I just
So let me offer some reassurance.
Say, we're good to go, we're covered.
The daylight that may have been found would have been with the previous version.
Previous version.
Because of the plan, because when when this all came into effect with with the law, um, districts develop these plans that, you know, the guidance was to basically throw everything in the kitchen sink into the plan. Um, and things can change. Um, you know, oh, we we're not using that specific curriculum anymore. Oh, we're not using, we didn't do that particular P D this year. We did other P D, but not that P D. So districts under advice of attorneys over time have moved to streamline the plan to outline what the law wants you to outline in the plan and not go into a whole lot more detail that is not required by the law in your plan. So we have streamlined um this plan. But there really should be nothing um that conflicts with what language is in policy, which is also consistent with the law. Um, and the references in the handbook that really kind of go back to the language in the policy.
And most certainly, since this is out for um people to talk about for comment, we can take time over the next couple of weeks and look.
Yeah, and I
And I'll also get
These questions.
Yeah, I'll talk to the attorney too.
I I ask these questions not as a parent, but as a school committee member, thinking in terms of the liabilities associated here and knowing where my limitations are, and they are certainly not in reading legal documents. So that's why I ask the questions.
Okay. All right, anything else about this? Then um what we'll do is we'll leave this for public comment until the eighteenth of October. And we will come back and by then Melissa, uh the attorney will have weighed in on on um
And I I can give you an update too at next meeting if there's any comment that has come in. Um, and if I'm able to um get a response from our attorney by that time. Although I feel pretty comfortable that.
It's looked at all the time, I would think it all. But, okay. So we have next our personnel report. Mr. Cassidy. I'm thinking we're looking at you. Mr. Cassidy, you probably have to turn the microphone on.
Thank you, everyone. Mike Cassidy, uh business manager and HR director in front of the school committee tonight is the uh update on our recent resignations and hires in the district. Uh, this is usually the largest report that uh is presented to you uh during the school year. Um, Dr. Burnham and I always um like to highlight uh retirements and um uh give an opportunity to recognize uh years of service um uh when we present this document. So the only retirement that we have currently uh that has not been presented to the school committee is Jerry Sampson, who's the senior custodian at the Lunenburg Middle High School. She uh is retiring with thirty-two years uh at Lunenburg Public Schools. She uh I don't know if she has any other service be uh before that, but I know it's thirty-two years within this district. So we want to wish her well. Uh, she's retiring on November first. So and spending more time with her family and grandchildren. So I'll turn it back over to the chair if there's any questions you have.
No questions for me. I want to congratulate um Jerry on her amount of time here in the district and certainly hope I catch up with her before she vamuses in in November. Any anybody else have any comments? Um, there's a lot of moving back and forth and
Yeah, I don't. So relative to uh I I feel uncomfortable calling her Ms. or Mrs. Sampson because I've always called her Jerry forever. Um, um, you know, I've been around these schools my whole life, but in particular over the last twenty years. And Jerry is uh everywhere um at so many events. She's just ubiquitous. Uh, and I I see on here that her her address is Pepperell, Mass. And uh until I read this document, I thought she lived in Lunenburg. Uh, because you, you know, I mean, she is a ubiquitous part of our community and I I I hope she moves to Lunenburg and still hangs out because I I mean, she just, she takes such ownership in our schools. Um, I it's going to, that is a huge loss uh for us. And I've gotten to know her a little bit over the course of the last several months um as part of a negotiating team experience contract. And uh she's just an absolute delight to to work with and that she will be uh very, very missed. Um, relative to the the overall uh movement, and I know, Mr. Cassidy, you you mentioned that, you know, of course, this is the biggest personnel report of the year because of all of the movement that tends to occur in the summer. Um, this is a strikingly long document to me. Um, is it large in relation to what this document has looked like in previous years?
There's usually um um a number of resignations during the summertime. Um, but the the last report is u- usually in May and June. So we uh we try to uh, we try to delay that as much as in June because sometimes it's late retirements. And we want to incorporate them in into the ceremony in June. Um, but there there has been a lot of uh turnover, especially with our uh paraprofessional staff. There there are a number of resignations. We're actively seeking um um applicants for uh a number of positions in each school for paraprofessionals. Uh, the principals are working hard, we're recruiting um through Indeed, School Spring. Uh, I've got a job fair in a couple of weeks, a local job fair that I'm hoping to recruit some uh paraprofessionals for. Regards to teachers, we we still have one open teaching position. It's a speech and language pathologist. Um, you may hear You're called SLPs. Um. We we.
Which school?
That is at the middle high school. So um. We we repost that it's on Indeed. Uh, it's just a really hard to fill position. Uh, it it probably in the top five. Toughest teaching positions, yeah, chemistry, Latin. Uh, there's a couple of other ones, but I'd say under five, that's the fifth one has to be uh speech and language. So uh we are. Uh, moving forward, trying to recruit someone for that. So I hope I answered your question. I I it it does seem um. Lengthy, uh but we try to document uh as much as we can. There there were some transfers or or what we consider promotions. That opened up with some additional positions. Those don't normally happen. Very often, but. It's good for those employees.
This represents an enormous amount of work by you in your office.
I was just about.
A lot of onboarding.
I was just about to ask, how much extra work would it be to list vacancies? As far as um teachers and stuff on the next personnel report, it would be a lot of work.
To list what?
Vacancies, the vacant position.
No, that's right. I it I have a we have a tracking system in the HR office that. Um. You know, makes us report. Um. Relatively simple, the uh. Like sometimes it like uh where the employee comes from. And I keep on forgetting to do that every single year. So I I I'm gonna make that adjustment. I have made that adjustment. So tracking open positions is is simple.
Can we get that on the next person?
Yeah.
Hopefully that is zero.
Hopefully.
Yeah. Relative to my last. Comment, though, I I just pounded these in my head as I was going through this. Um. And I don't know if my count is accurate, but just on the hires and promotions. There were twenty-seven. Uh, by my count in the last. Sixty days. Most of them effective, obviously, being in August. Um, which. Represents hosting, interviewing, hiring, onboarding, like that is just a. Tremendous amount of work considering the size of our operation.
So I've got I've got to give them credit and that's a that's a lot of work. Scheduling interviews. Uh, doing the interviews and uh reference checking. And then ultimately making a recommendation to superintendent in the HR office. So we're a team. We try to make the system move as quickly as and smoothly as possible.
We thank you very much for all your work on this. Um, do I have a motion to approve the personnel report?
Motion to approve?
All those in favor? Hi. Thank you, Mister Cassidy. All right, next we have the um draft capital plan.
So um. We did um make some. Adjustment. Since the um the last meeting. And actually, since the first uh draft that you saw earlier uh in the week. To your folder.
Oh, what?
So this is version two we should be looking at?
Yes.
Okay.
So in the school, may I speak?
Yes, please.
But I I just want to direct the school committee to.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, just some of the feedback that I got from the last meeting. We did clean this documented up. Um. I think there were. There were some old uh projects that were still uh holding up a line. There there were some old projects that still had a line. There was no dollar amount. So I uh I hid those call uh rows. Um, just to make it a little bit cleaner. I made an attempt to um. Shift projects. Um, seems like it it looked like a dartboard the last time. So I I I did it chronologically. Uh, as the projects uh came up, I just kind of li- lined those costs up. And proposed dates. A couple of the projects that I want to bring to your attention was uh at the primary school. The replacement of the playground equipment. Um, we broke it out into phase one and phase two. So uh, once again, this is, this is a proposal from administration to the school committee. Is is getting a designer, designer class to come in and take a look at the project. Uh. I recently attended a um. A presentation at Masbo in with other districts that have done uh play playground equipment and installation. And then there's a, there's a uh, but the my opinion and from from the opinion from some of the other districts. There is uh obviously uh hiring a designer, a playground designer. And then uh a another phase of involving the community on exactly what they would want. So you you the designer will uh will meet with the community. Uh, it it what we're not, we're not looking for a a rubber stamp. Playground equipment in that area. We're looking for a designer who will work with the community on what they need and. Then create the plans and specifications at that point in time. Uh, and that 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 can take a while. Um. At that point in time, we should get some class estimates. By next fall. To put in for uh the installation.
We feel it's important for, you know, somebody who. Um. Knows this this field well, um, to make sure that we. Select and install equipment that is accessible to all of our students. We do know that we have. Um, some students with some physical limitations. Um. In our schools, we just want to make sure that they all can safely access um. Elements of the playground with their peers.
I particularly was very glad to see this on on this plan. Because I know the playground equipment definitely needs replacing. So.
So the the installation of the uh air conditioning units, the phase two at the primaries unchanged. Safety film at, and I'm just just talking year one, uh safety film. Uh, window film is still uh on for year one. Going to Turkey Hill, uh the 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 planning study for renovations is still on the project uh being proposed. Si- uh, in the last capital or the 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 previous draft, there was um. I'm gonna backtrack, but we didn't have the cost for the safety film for the primary. So that's thirty-eight thousand one hundred and twenty. The thirty-three thousand uh five sixty-nine was on that. Um. One thing that. We've been working on, um, we were looking at this window replacement. Uh, project that we have scheduled for FY twenty-six. And um. Looking at the the uh MSBA requirements. Um, for for the some of the smaller projects. It does require. Um. I'll call it municipalities or 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 uh the school districts. To have plans and specifications ready to go for the construction. So anything that. Uh, we're planning on, uh, those are that those small projects under MSBA. We're gonna have to support that with plans and specifications going in. To uh. Um. Requesting those funds with the state. So we did, this was year two, not this year, uh not in FY twenty-five, but FY twenty-six, a set aside. Of two hundred ninety thousand dollars for plans and specifications. Um. That cost um could be a little high. There's a lot of windows there that need to be measured. There are some obstacles with uh some of the exterior caulking uh is uh has asbestos. So that there there's some sensitivity as far as the removal. Uh, of that, um, and for the participants of that building. If we could just go down to that, the Lunenburg Middle High School. Um. The safety film uh for uh was not included in the last. Uh, the first draft. So that cost is forty-two thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars. We broke out the uh um the turf field. Um, we are uh this school year. Well, with Opera Funds, we are going to be doing a feasibility study of that whole area. There are no plans and specifications for that that area out there. All all that, all that work was done. Um, with volunteers and uh that that area needs to be surveyed by civil engineers. So. There will be, um, uh, we are proposing uh funding. Through the capital funds uh this year to support some site survey work. Uh, moving forward. Um, in conjunction with the the uh feasibility study. And the site survey, I think we'll be prepared uh for the third year. To prioritize some of the the improvements that have to be done coming out of that feasibility study.
So. Do you mind if I?
Go ahead.
Just digging this. I I've got a number of questions, but specific to this, um, because this is hard to follow, just in terms of the logic. Um. We have been approved a sum of money from ARPA to look at the problem. I don't recall exactly what that number is up to.
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand dollars. Okay.
Specifically to look at the turf field wall?
To look at that facility.
And the system around it.
The. The. Slow implosion that's happening there. Um. That fifty thou- how does that fifty thousand dollars relate to thirty thousand dollars and then to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars? I guess I'm I'm having a hard time. Understanding the progression of events.
We're going to uh that fifty thousand dollars is going to be used to hire a designer. Or an architect or some engineer. To go out to those fields that or that area. Take a look at the drainage issue, the sidewalks. The um. The retaining wall, the concession stand. So it's really looking at. Um. Best use for that space.
Use or or an assessment of what's happening?
Yeah, yeah, what's happening. But they're not going to have any plans and specifications. No drawings. They are going to be going out there and doing site work and making recommendations. The site survey work. Will be uh uh preliminary plans that we can use or. As we, as we move forward on probably the next phase of prioritizing what improvements are coming out of that feasibility study. We're gonna have some some drawings that an architect can can pick up. And start moving forward on. Uh, creating more specifications for improvements.
Why is it two separate steps?
Well, it's funding.
We have fifty thousand dollars.
We've only got fifty thousand.
And I I I understand the progression. I think that the challenge that I have here is that every time you go to the well. It's an opportunity to be told no. And it creates either a gap. Where the condition gets worse. Or it creates. A stoppage. And the money that you've spent becomes no longer. Of any value, right? We're we're basically flushing that money. And. I guess what immediately comes to mind is is I I think that. Just because it might take a year and a half to do all that work, doesn't necessarily mean that we get the appropriation over two years. I I think we may want to consider looking for the appropriation in one year so that we can come to town meeting with a plan. That. May require, quite honestly, some some borrowing to be able to pay for the totality of the the actual construction work. But I'm just thinking of this in terms of the the politics of it and the continuity of the capital planning committee and all those kinds of things like. Having to. I'm mixing my metaphors here, but having to swing the bat multiple times. And and each each success just leads to another opportunity for failure. In my mind, I would rather swing multiple times and each one of those swings is a potential home run that we can get the whole thing taken care of.
Um. So you suggesting that we merge the thirty and the one twenty into next year?
I'm thinking that's worth consideration. Um, and it. You know, de- depending upon how quickly this assessment can happen with the fifty thousand dollars that we have. May inform some of that decision-making as we go through the capital planning process this year. Right, and and so I'm not recommending anything. I'm just saying I think that this deserves to be teased out a little bit. Um, the other thing, just, I mean. Just for the benefit of every of anybody who may be listening. We've got fifty thousand dollars going to this. There's another hundred and fifty thousand dollars that needs to go to site surveys and planning and we haven't put up. We haven't put a shovel in the ground. And that could be another two million dollars that potentially that doesn't include a turf replacement. So. And and you know, we've all, we've all seen over the course of the last several years that, you know, public works projects don't get less expensive over time. Um, so this is a, this is a big and looming problem that I think. The sooner we we take it on, the the greater probability we have for success.
We think that the likelihood that the turf field replacement will be part and parcel of what the recommendations are is is pretty. Pretty significant. Uh, because the current turf is uh approaching. Typical end of life.
Yeah.
And it has taken an awful lot of abuse because of the drainage issues. So um. You know, to fix the drainage issues that are causing our our uh. Challenges with the retaining wall and the bleachers and the press box. It it's all gonna tie into the drainage that continues underneath the field.
I I completely.
So we really suspect that that.
I completely.
Replacement of the turf is gonna be. Part of the the recommended.
I I guess the point that I'm trying to make is is that a a turf field is a couple hundred thousand dollars. To 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 take what we have now and replace it with new turf is roughly two hundred thousand. And we have come up with a system for. Doing that and paying for it over time. We've done two iterations and we're likely to do a third. We should not do that without a plan for fixing the relying facility. Uh, regardless of whether that. Is a one point eight million dollar plan or a two million dollar plan or whatever it is, we've got to address the facility before we. Before we go and blanket it in turf that we then have to pick up and fix the facility. So so timing is important here, like. To my earlier point, if this doesn't get prioritized. To my earlier point, if this doesn't get prioritized and funded, it's another year that delays the whole thing.
Yeah, and I, that's a fair point.
So can I just? To me, the thirty thousand dollars is for plans.
It's for a site survey.
It's the site survey, it says architectural plan, site survey. And the one twenty is for shovel in the ground, right?
No, that's not how I read this. So. And Mr. Cassidy, please, please correct me.
Upgrade. Doesn't that mean shovel in the ground?
You can't do an architectural plan. Until you know exactly where everything is that you currently have is.
And isn't that the fifty thousand dollars?
No, the fifty thousand dollars is probably putting cameras down drains to figure out where drains are clogged. Understanding what isn't happening from, in terms of the appropriate drainage that's supposed to be happening above. It's really looking at the drainage problem that we have, not the meets and bounds of the property and knowing where everything is. There's no has built on this, on this property. We don't know.
Right.
Where the drains run or anything like that. So the site survey. Will give us the preponderance of information that an architect would need to actually plan.
To go beyond, to spend the hundred and twenty thousand.
So it says the hundred and twenty upgrade turf field walls, drainage and concession stand.
It's just the, literally the design.
Yeah.
It's design.
Yeah.
Okay, that word should probably be in there somewhere.
I think those should be two separate lines.
Yeah.
Because if that's, if that's design as well, then I would agree with you that it all needs to go together. I, I was thinking it was. Doing some of the stuff, the first part, but, um, but if that's not what it is. Then I would agree with you that maybe, I mean, who knows how much they would give us, but.
To change the subject a little bit, what is the timeline for approving this? This is a discussion topic.
I think next week, next time.
The next, the next meeting would be.
Meeting, we have to prove this.
Okay.
Uh, so for the primary, we've got the playground equipment this year. The design. And then replacing it next year, hopefully. And then next year, starting the assessment for the driveway. Are we certain that it's, that's the plan? For improving the driveway is not going to interfere with the placement of playground equipment at all? There's plenty of property there, so there should be ample room to widen the driveway and still. Really maintain the location of the. The playground area.
Okay.
Where it is now.
We should probably put in here the desire.
Yes, yes, the designer should be made aware of, of that upcoming project. That's a good catch, yeah.
Um, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, because um. In case there's other options for the primary, like a loo, like a larger loop or behind the board. In case there are other options, are we limiting ourselves by spending all this money on playground that now we're trying to build the driveway around? I'm not sure that we have uh, enough money to do that space behind the building. To do, to do uh, a driveway around because they. They actually um, got permission to use an existing. Roadway. Um, that is on private property, is my understanding, as an uh, emergency exit. Okay, so if we had had enough space to put that emergency access around the back of the building. We likely would have.
Okay.
But you could.
We're at a third bus.
Yeah, I.
Now I'm, because there's. The primary. It was really rough at the open house as far as parking. Every year, the challenge becomes true that they try to stagger grades, you know, so. And, and even at that, you've got turnover between, you've got people who come and stay because they have multiple grade level children. Um, but I'm, we, we know that it's a significant. Challenge, uh, and the public safety. Officials know that it's a significant challenge. But I'm wondering if. Swapping the playground equipment in the driveway. They're roughly the same cost.
I wouldn't do that because of the, because of the safety. Involved in the playground equipment. I, there's irritation on the part of people that have to wait in the parking. And there's safety of children.
Is the current, is the current equipment at or beyond its lifespan?
I, I would say that it's uh, approaching. My, my concern from the day I arrived in district. Is the scale of that playground. Is not appropriate. For our youngest. Learners. If you look at the scale of the playground equipment at Turkey Hill Elementary School. It is much smaller scale than the equipment that is located at the primary school. Even though it was rated as appropriate. For the age group that's located at the primary school. From the lens of a mother. I will tell you. That I, I would not have ever agreed. That that was appropriate scale for that. That age group.
Where kids bouncy twenty five years ago.
Maybe.
My kids are always big, never big, so, so.
My kids were tiny and.
So here, here's my, I, I. I, I tend to sympathize with Mrs. Buzowski. Point here. Um. And I'm familiar with the emergency exit. Issue on that property. I've been around a little while. I was around for that discussion. Um. And I've experienced everything that you just described and it is a safety nightmare, particularly in the dark, and that didn't.
And it's not the irritation, it's the potential safety issues of the school.
But it's also irritating.
With that one exit and.
So.
Do, do you want to move that? Into next year in addition? Rather than in place of?
So here's my, here's my thinking on this. I would hate to go. And position. Playground equipment someplace. Where a designer comes in and says, if you completely change your traffic pattern around the school. And we create traffic around the school in some way that is going to help alleviate. Some of the problem that you have, it's a one way, it's a whatever, I don't know anything about that discipline. But you just went and dropped. You know, hundreds of thousands of dollars of playground equipment right in the way of a potential solution. I'd feel really badly about having made that decision. And, and again, I don't, you could sit here and tell me that you don't think that anything that that. That eventuality is gonna come to pass. And I would tend to believe you, but. None of us here are civil engineers or traffic experts. So, or, or site surveyors that know exactly where the meets and bounds of the property is. So. I, I think, I, I, you know, that. I, I think you're on to something. I just, again, I think it needs a little bit of discussion.
Well, we would definitely. Need the discussion of the full group.
I, I.
In order to change that.
Yep. Um. But that's a really good point. And if we could. If we could see our way to. Solving both problems. In an expeditious way, that would be great, but it, it all costs money and we, there are a number of priorities here that I'll have to be dealt with. With a limited checkbook.
And who knows what would be approved anyhow?
Yeah.
In every town.
Um, can we talk a little bit about window film?
Yes.
So. There was an, there was a request last year for safety win- window film. That incorporated all the buildings. And we. It was not highly rated by the capital planning committee, it was in the bottom third of their prioritization list. Uh, despite the fact that the school committee rated it as a number one priority. Um, in generally speaking, we're imperatively well-funded on the capital plan. For the current fiscal year.
Yeah.
But the safety film was not well sold. Um, we now have it broken out. For some numbers that are similar to the totality of the previous numbers in three different schools. Um. Are we, I'm, I'm assuming we're still talking first floor only? For these.
Um, I think that when we talked about Turkey Hill, was I mistaken, we were talking. I thought we had included the second floor because of the. Uh, potential for uh, energy savings. Because it deflects a lot of the solar. Heat from coming into the building, which would greatly alleviate the challenges that we have. Um. During certain times of the year. Couple of weeks ago, as an example. Um.
So here, here in lies the problem.
But the, the windows that need it most for the energy savings benefit are the oldest windows that people feel we should just replace.
Right, so if you're gonna replace the windows to film them and then. A year later, start talking about replacing them three years, you know.
So where I have the, so, so I'm just trying to think through this logically in terms of the totality of our request for this year. How will eventually prioritize this list, which we want to do by the way, next week?
Yep.
Um. The safety film was, we had a hard time selling this to the capital planning committee and by extension. You know, town meeting and the town manager do account for those recommendations. Um. In my mind, as I look at the buildings and think about where our needs are for safety film. Turkey Hill comes immediately to mind, like in tor- in terms of the proportion of need. Ninety percent on Turkey Hill because of the design of that building and ten percent every place else. However. We have thirty three thousand, five hundred and sixty nine dollars for safety window film and FY twenty five for Turkey Hill. And then over the next two years, we're gonna spend one point four million dollars to replace the windows. So I.
The cha- it, to your point, though, the challenge is. Will we get funded for that in two, three, four years or will it be six or seven years? And then for six or seven years, we will have had the energy benefit of the film and the safety benefit of the film. Because that window replacement is a big price tag that. You know, if we were to stay. In line with. Um, the total budget for the entire capital plan every year. That would be the only project that could be funded. If, if they chose to, to fund it through capital.
So. My preference, and, and again, they, this can all remain, it's just a matter of prioritization in my mind.
Absolutely.
But a- as I think about FY twenty five. Um. Where I really want. Safety window film is across the front of Turkey Hill and down those hallways. That, that go to the main uh, classroom. And I, I'd like to know what that cost is first. And if it's over twenty thousand dollars, then it's my number one priority. And if it's under twenty thousand dollars, then we need to find a way in our existing budget to go do that now. Um, and the other window safety, I, again, you can leave it, we can leave it all on there, it's just gonna be. Based on my experience over, over the past year, I, I don't think it's going to uh. I don't think it's gonna fall.
Let's still write it on there though.
Well, I think it's important to state that we want it, even if they say no.
Yeah, that's.
I, I think it is, but um.
The, the other thing relative to the.
Expensive thing.
And I, I know that. We, we have, we have funds that are gonna deal with some of the safety issues at Turkey Hill and. Those things are frankly taking longer than I think any of us would like to come to fruition. Um. The, the police chief has mentioned to me privately, and I think he has in a public meeting as well, that. There are potentially other sources of funding to deal with these things, through grants.
Which we have pursued and not been successful.
Okay, so I, I, we remiss not to, not to ask that. And then the other potential funding source that. Um. Came up for both the AC project and the window film is, has the uh, Green Communities Group. Been engaged for any of this?
That could, yeah. Um. Mr. Passios had reached out, um, and uh. We advised him at that point that we were presenting the Turkey Hill Facility Improvement Plan. Um, and that one of the items that would be um. Likely a high priority. Uh. Would be to replace the windows at Turkey Hill because then we replace them, they are more energy efficient, so we take care of that. We can also then have new windows that we can apply a film to, um, so. Uh, we, we did, um, I, I did indicate that a window replacement project at Turkey Hill. Um. Maybe a viable option for their. Green Communities Grant.
So could we potentially kick that off in parallel, pursue that? Look, we don't think we're gonna be asking for one point three nine dollars for this year for windows.
Right.
Seems to be like that.
That. Any money we could get to Green Communities.
I mean, and even if we got some amount of money for the window dome, I mean, I, I'd pay ten thousand dollars to have dome on those windows, no wonder. I, that, that's how I feel about it.
Yeah.
But. If, if we knew that we were going for Green Communities at, you know, grant and. There was an, we, we can change this in parallel, like. You know, or we can be approved money and not spend it to get back for next year, I mean, you know, there are, there are other scenarios, we don't have to only pick one.
Right, okay. That's a good suggestion. I remember they, at some meeting I was at. Whoever. Is the chair of that committee, who unfortunately I can't remember who it is, um, did say they were looking for a project, yes, I think it was. Mr. Black. And they said they were looking for project.
Is there any? Pathway for Green Community Support for AC?
I don't know.
I don't either, let me just. I shouldn't ask a question, I have no idea what the answer to this, but.
I have no idea. The only way to find out is to ask.
Based on comments made in public. Relative to the AC project. Um, I'm not sure that those involved with the Green Communities Grant would agree that that is a worthwhile project to do.
Okay.
Alright.
I think that's worth some discussion over the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
Alright, so anything, anything else on here?
One more question.
One more question, alright, go ahead, one more.
Uh, you had mentioned truck, I'm, I won't, I won't belabor the truck issue tonight. Um. When you mentioned the, the hiring of Mr. Hebe and the capital plan in his current community. I'm mindful of the fact that we're doing this without a facilities director.
As are we.
Um, so first of all, I think it should be stated that we're in fact doing this without a facilities director. Um. Does the, and, and obviously this stuff needs to be entered in a clear govern, the, of, the process needs to start. In a couple of weeks from now.
Which we have access to do.
Yes, um. I think that we should. Have a discussion, and I indicated, I will, I'd be happy to do this, but as a committee. Um, typically in the past, the school department has gone through the capital planning gauntlet first. For whatever reason, that's been the case the last couple of years at least. I think given our current condition and it so happens that I believe the town also has a vacancy with a facilities director position, so. We may have a. We may have conflicting challenges, um, but I, I do think that it's worth. Having a discussion about the timing of this presentation because I would like to have. Mr. Hebe's take on some of this and. Bring some of his expertise to bear before.
For that meeting, yeah. That makes sense. If there's a way we can do that, that makes sense.
This is Brian. Uh, the town has uh, hired a new facilities director. He did show up at the last Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee. Uh, meeting, so he might be somebody even to reach out to, to get his uh, perspective on the schools too, but. Just so everybody knows. It'll be in my report.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Laynan, do you have a name of this individual?
Not off the top of my head. Not off the top of my head, um, but I can get it for you.
Thank you. Well, now that we have you back, do you have anything to add to this discussion about the capital plan?
No, nothing new.
And then I think probably best to um. Put this aside for this evening and take it up again next time. All right.
Could I just add one?
Oh, you certainly can. You certainly can.
This will be on our website.
Thank you for saying that.
And uh, I did add uh, something on the bottom. It was recommended that. You know, our planning five years out really contingent, is contingent upon the municipal uh, building outcomes. So th- this plan. Addresses a rehabilitation of Turkey Hill Elementary School. Time will tell. So I think it was important to note that. Uh, knowing what we know right now. So thank you.
Thank you.
The name of the facilities director that I had was Christopher Ruth, R U T H.
Oh, he's, he's been the director for a bit of time now. I, I was aware. Okay, thank you. I thought that there was somebody new.
I was. I don't want to state misinformation, so I'll, I'll. I'll be quiet.
Okay. All right, let's move on then.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mister Cassidy. Um, the Strategy Action Plan.
So uh, these are the plans that I uh, presented. Uh, at the last meeting, they're also on the website. They've also been uh, shared so that any. Families or staff have an opportunity to ask questions or provide comment or feedback. And I know that the. The committee members last meeting indicated that they wanted some time to contemplate what was in there, so. And there is no specific timeline for um. Approval. Just know that the work that's outlined here is ongoing currently.
Um, I had a couple of things since I was not at the last meeting that I just wanted um. I, I feel like Tony, I didn't know an acronym. Um, it was in the um, the first plan. And it was um, vocal.
So that's the um, the student uh, survey that's administered uh, with the MCAS. Testing each year, um, it. It provides us some, some data on um. School climate from a student lens.
Thank you.
Do I get that every year? Mm-hmm. Oh, okay.
I didn't know that one. And the other thing I wanted to say was I wanted to talk about. And applaud in um, culture and climate to the work on differentiation. Because I, I saw that they were going to be teachers researching um. Practice in the areas of um, differentiation. I saw the, the discussion of the specialists working with the teachers, all those things we had talked about regarding differentiation. I see has been amped up in this plan. Yes. So um, thank you.
You're welcome.
So did anybody else have comments on the strategy? No? Mister Layton, any comments on the strategy?
No, thank you.
Do we, do you anticipate moving this to an action item? Coming in here?
We, um, can if you're, if you're.
I think we can. I don't, I don't have a problem with it. We can approve it and put it. Into action.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, you know. Perhaps when we announce the next meeting or, you know, in communications, we. Remind people again that. To look at. It's been out there for a month.
Yes.
And if you have any questions or comments, please speak up. And let's. Let's move on it.
We can make a plan to move on it at the next meeting. All right. Sounds good to me. Now our school committee goals. We can have a discussion, however, my thought is. Without a full committee, I don't want to vote on goals. Um, I spent some back and forth time with Mister Layton in a little bit and um. We are going to work on. Encompassing goals. So that we will be able to present the next time.
By encompassing, you mean? Taking the suggestions.
What everybody's been looking at and see where the similarities are and see what. You know, because I'm looking at things through, and I don't look the same way everybody else does, obviously. But I'm looking at things through a budget lens. I'm looking at things through a transparency lens. You know, and see how we could align things so that what people are concerned about gets met. And the other thing I would suggest is that if you want to write something out. We'll put everything in the folder. We're not going to discuss the folder. We're not going to write on each other's things in the folder. We're not going to violate open meeting policy. But if you, if you have things that. You, besides what has been stated, if you polish something up. And you want to put it in the folder for the next meeting. Then please do so. Send it to Dr. Burnham and she'll just put it in the folder.
Yeah, I like the idea, just so that we're not starting from scratch too. It would be a long meeting, I think, if we start from scratch and try to write it out. Something writing to start and revise from there.
Because we do tend to be all over the place.
Yeah, we've all communicated ideas.
Right.
And some of those ideas have been endorsed by other members and, you know, I mean, that. That conversation did occur, right?
Yes, absolutely.
If we can get these into a, a. A consolidated document that then you apply some analytics to and say. This is a like, you know, or even a recommendation that can accelerate that conversation.
Or this won't, will work or, or whatever. Yeah, so if that is all right with the board, that is the plan on goals. Wonder. Okay?
Fully aligned with that.
All right, then we will. Put this off again. Hopefully we can put this to rest next time. Okay. So now we have first read on non-discrimination policies. And I will say before. Um, we talk about this. I did, there were a couple that the, the grammar was a bit disjointed and um, Liz went through and fixed it. So if you read through them and you felt that. Like there was at the end of a sentence, it just, middle of a sentence, it just stopped. Those things have been fixed. So typically on a first read of policies, we do not read the policies. The policies are posted. If anybody in the public, which is to make comment, we read three times, voting at the end of the third read. So is there anyone on the committee that has a comment about any of these policies? They all deal with non-discrimination.
I do not. Do we need to make a motion to waive reading them individually or can we do this as a group?
Oh, we can do it as a group. Yeah. Is um, Laura, you all right to waive?
I am.
Okay, and Brian?
Yes.
Okay, so I need a motion to waive the first reading of these nondescript discrimination policies.
Motion to waive the first reading of the non-discrimination policy.
Second.
Um, all those in favor, it has to be a roll call because Mister Layton is remote.
Mister Layton?
Yes.
Mister Brusowski?
Yeah.
Mister Beardmore?
Yes.
And Mrs. O'Sham?
Yes. Okay. So once again, I would say if anyone in the public wishes to take a look at these policies and make comments, send your comments to LPS. At Lun- um, Lunenburg Schools dot net. And tongue tied here, and um, those comments we will address at our next meeting. Okay, so now we are on to reports. We have many reports, so um, who would like to start? You don't have a report, so you can't start. Laura doesn't. Mister Layton, and I know you have reports.
Yes, so I had sent them to Carol just in case I wasn't going to make it, but I made it just in time. So I was at a parent teacher conferences tonight, but I do have a couple of reports. Uh, finance meeting, uh, finance. Committee meeting was uh, last Thursday. Uh, the town manager typically does a report, um, so she talked about. That the, uh, they awarded a trash recycle consulting bid. It's basically a supportive business alternative. Uh, they were the sole bidder. They're going to work with the vendors and the citizens. They, uh, they deal with bag issues. Uh, education outreach last year, um, it's the last year of the pay-as-you-go bags. And then they're going to put it out to bid, so they're going to try to see if they can modify that as needed, but they're not looking to lose the bags. Um, people who are concerned about the bags should contact the vendor for faulty bags. Um, she also mentioned the Page Street culvert is complete. It was on time and under budget. Uh, the LED streetlight project began last week. They encountered some issues with the wiring. Um, and they're working with Unitil and the cost is still TB determined, um, and this was a Green Communities Grant. The senior center should be done, um, their project done by the end of the month and October eleventh is a ribbon cutting. The TCP roof leak, uh, leaks continue, uh, including the public access room. Uh, and there's going to be an article at the special town meeting for a partial repair. And they're planning a phased approach for the repair with the worst sections first. Uh, the new website um, launch is going to be October tenth. They've upgraded to Munis. Uh, it's basically for accounting and training is ongoing. Uh, they've applied for a grant to test network equipment. The nine twenty-five Mass Ave EPA approved additional funding for soil well installation, lift removal. And floor drain and tank. Uh, the underground storage tank uh, already was removed. Uh, this year, the, doing a recertification of real estate will occur. The vendor is Vision. It's not by January twenty-first. There's a delay in the deadline for approval. The third quarter prelim bills. Um, will match the first prelim bills, only one bill in the fourth quarter. Before December. Before December, it's due February first. Once the values are certified, there'll be a hearing in February, March, and then the fourth quarter bills would be issued. So one thing that came up was the, the two and a half. Percent that you have to stay kind of within, otherwise you're going to get an override. I guess the number. Is based off of what the tax was before the abatements, so the abatements aren't going to. Drop that number where you can only go two and a half over, so it's still two and a half percent over the original amount. Um, there was some bad news about health insurance. Um, she had mentioned that. The budget estimates were a ten percent increase and that also the trends for the next five years were eight to ten percent. Um, due to low and, low employment in the medical field and hospital contracts. She also mentioned that the articles closed on September eighteenth and at the time of the meeting, there were no citizens. Um, articles so far. She mentioned the ARPA had fifty-eight thousand left. Um, there was an interim, they were planning to meet with the interim financial, finance director. The next meeting, um, there was also not a full committee and they're still missing two. So there was no re- reorganization, but they did talk about liaisons, uh, reorganization, trying to be more visible in different uh, committees. The, also, so the building design committee met on Monday. Uh, the Newtown facilities director was there, gave an update on the TCP roof leaks and patches. Uh, the building design committee is discussing phases now. At this point, phase one would typically. The assumption would be it would be a first roof repairs for the TCP to fix leaks. We could use that as transition space as well. Uh, then it would be also ritter renovations and the expansion of the ritter for a town hall. And then to finish off that phase would be the parking lot expansion in that area. Phase two would be renovation of the town hall and then phase three is a little bit to be determined, but really a community center. With the hope of a future meeting with the school committee to discuss the Turkey Hill future, so they could decide, you know, is it TCP, is it Turkey Hill? Michael Ray Jeffrey said he would shout to Carol and Doctor Burnham to set up a meeting. And the special town meeting will have an update article from the building design committee.
Thank you very much. I'm going to read Tony's reports. Um, one is that in the policy um, subcommittee, we have two policies coming up for first read after consultation with the attorney. The PTO update is that the Hollis Hills event went quite well despite the rain. And they are working on events for the future such as stock the lounge, movie and special someone dance. So that's from PTO from Tony. Um, the master plan committee met this week and I did not make it, but I want to thank the public access people. For taping it and having it, so I could watch it today. Um, they organized their committee. Um, Josie Gilchrist is the chair. The vice chair is Tim Wilmner. Um, they talked about the process that every ten years it's required by the state. However, nobody ever checks on whether or not you do it because it is yet again another unfunded mandate from the state. So they don't get after you if you don't do it because they don't pay for it. Adam Bernie said that it's a living document to set lofty goals, but have some reachable objectives. The consultants were there. They said they were going to focus on land use, economic development, housing, transportation. Cultural opportunities, open space and recreation. And they have three phases to this project. A discovery phase to discover what's going on in the community. That is where we are. Recommendations and then a report. They will in the next couple of weeks start a website called planlunenburg.com. That will take care of all things master plan related. And they wish to have a public meeting in October and November to inform um, information. To inform the community about information that has been collected regarding existing conditions in the community. And they will be meeting on the first Thursday of each month at six PM. That's what I've got. So. If that's it for reports, we are on to topics for future discussion. We obviously need to deal with our school committee goals. We're going to deal with the um. You know, you know how many times I do that? I do that almost every single time. Thank you for saying that. Is there any public comment? Usually Brian says to me, don't forget public comment, but he's on the Zoom.
Um, I'll be really quick.
That's all right.
Um, at the beginning, I thought I wouldn't say anything, but actually came up with something really positive that I want to share with everyone. Um, I want to throw out very specific, um, thank you to the following people. Who have helped me um, with a teacher's accent for my own song, who is not even in the Lunenburg Public Schools. I just wanted to share with my family, this brought the thunder and I think it's important to step, step with going right and making something that was very right, so. Big thanks to Heidi Chanting for coordinating all the meetings and assessments. Jessica Bungard, Corallo and Friday, I'm going to, I'm assuming. Um, Julie DeWolff, Doctor Julie DeWolff and Mary Seaman, S L P. Who all were just absolutely lovely and provided very impactful conversations. And I was going to come up as a very supportive, but I probably school, even for my son who has yet to be a mom, so. Thank you all for employing and supporting such well.
Well, thank you and thank you for reminding me that I needed to do that.
Is there anything else on Zoom?
Yeah, is there anyone else on Zoom?
I see no hands raised.
Okay, then we'll keep going. Topics for future discussion, we need to look at, look at the capital plan. That has to be approved next time, right? And um, if we could sew up the goals next time, that would be delightful. And what else? So we.
Approve the strategy next.
Oh, approve the strategy. Thank you. And then whatever else is on the calendar. Unless anybody has anything else they want to add in. Okay, then I. Okay, then I would take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
At eight twenty.
Nice.
I hope Tony's watching.
Yeah, I hope so. Okay.
Second.
All right, and a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Pozowski?
Yes.
And Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
And Mrs. O'Sham.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Night, everyone.
Good night, Brian.